Calling this meeting on September twenty fifth order. We have four board members in person and one board person zooming in via phone. So we've established a form. Um, before we get started, Chad, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
No. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands unafidish under God in its soul with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, before we go to the student showcase, are there any additions, deletions, or questions regarding the agenda? Harry Nun would like to turn the meeting over to Teravon.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And stand up and join me. All of y'all. Are we over here?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so this is Rena and Paris and Dylan and Mason. And we are going to give you just a little preview of, well, not a preview, a post view about North School last year at Washington Family Ranch. And it was an experiment for both the Redmond School District and Washington Family Ranch and Coil, who is our curriculum provider for outdoor school. Um, and so, um, we had the opportunity, Tuck, Lynch, and Teravon all went together. And it was a very large group. And I just want to give you a little bit of data to start with. Coil, um, told all of the students, all of the counselors, and any of the adults that went up and volunteered. And the adult data I didn't have available, but the student data, there were, um, ten different, um, study stations that kids rotated throughout the two and a half days that we were there. And by far, the most popular station was, what do you think? Oh, it was archery.
And then first aid.
I was thinking fire.
Foraging, and they got to go and look at the native plants and they made tea and they built a fire and they did first aid. They did a ton of learning, a ton of writing about what they learned. And so I'm going to turn it over to the girls to kind of share their highlights.
Um, I definitely think it was like a great camp experience. Um, we got to do, um, little like around the campfire things and got a little talent show and I thought that was really fun. Um, they all the activities were super fun. They weren't too long or too short. Um, I definitely am not a kid who is, um, a big sleepover fan. But I'll tell you, this was probably the most, um, fun and non-anxious I have been. And so I didn't get homesick at all. And so I thought that was very great. But yeah, it was definitely, uh, very fun. And I got to like get to know more of, um, kids from other schools and just, um, my friends and the community at Teravon. And, um, I had never really been closer with them and now, um, I'm super close. And so, um, I definitely thought that was, um, very fun and a very, um, rememberable, um, experience.
Um, I think it was a really cool experience we got to do. Um, I really liked like the little skits we got to do and the food was really good. Oh, yeah, that was, yeah, that was really good. Uh, all like the little stations we got to go to were really cool. I like the, um, yeah, the first aid, uh, that was really cool. Um, we got like injuries and then heal people. And, um, and then making the tea was really fun. And yeah, I got closer with like people in my cabin and I like our high school cabin leader and yeah.
Um, my experience was really fun. This was my first time being a camp counselor or anything. And I feel like personally, I grew my own confidence with like directing the kids and being able to like create relationships with them, but also like, um, teach some things and like grow their respect for me. And, um, I learned a lot about leadership in like the, like different stations we did. Like, I learned to adapt really quickly with like what the counselor was like or the staff was teaching. They told me by the last day that I was supposed to teach it. And so I quickly found out how to teach the kids what they were teaching me. And I feel like all the different stations were very attentive. I feel like the kids like weren't bored at any point. I feel like there was all like hands on. So, yeah, I feel like it was a very fun camp.
What was your camp name?
I was Bubbles. That was my camp name.
And what was your camp name?
Um, wait, and that was Sun, which is my dog's name, so.
My camp name is Willow, but my actual name is Mason. So my camp experience with being camp counselor is a really positive one. I had a great time. It was also my first time being a counselor for like overnight camp. But I thought the kids are really fun to interact with. Coil was such a positive leadership group to, we had meetings every morning and they'd tell us kind of what the day was going to look like and what we're going to do with the kids. But at one point, they told us we were going to have to do a skit. And I know that scared a lot of the people or my friends that we went with because they're not really public people. But I'd say after the skit, we all went with a positive experience, all laughing and smiling. We still didn't say like, remember when we did that? Like, that was funny. Like, that was really fun. And the kids loved it and we loved it. And like those, I mean, I adapted really quickly to what we were learning with the Coil leaders because they did tell us we were going to teach it, except for mine told me I was going to teach it on the second day. So apparently I got lied to. I was adapting really quickly and learning to deal with different types of kids, which challenging, a new challenge for me because I've never had to deal with stuff like that before, like some kids adapt better to certain learning stances rather than other ones, which I know my parents always want to say, but I, yes, I didn't really think about that until I had to be the one teaching the kids and adapting to the different way they learned. But I'd say it was a public experience and a lot of the counselors or all of the counselors that went are really excited and pumped to come back and they're asking when they can sign up.
So it was a neat experiment for Redmond School District because not only did three elementary schools go, but we also had counselors from both Redmond and Ridgeview. Um, and then each cabin group had a high school counselor and a parent volunteer um, to manage the overnight and it went really well. We had, we had kids from all three schools who had never done a field trip, let alone an overnighter, who were able to be there and be successful. But for those who didn't want to or couldn't get their head around the overnight, the day option was really fabulous. There was a bus of kids that went up, uh, every morning and came back every night. So it was pretty great. Any questions that we can answer for you?
Thank you for doing that. For making the effort, for putting the time and energy. And I know it was a big lift for everyone there. I think I hopped off a plane and headed down to, to check it out. And I remember Coil saying that, um, they'd never seen an interest, so much interest from administration coming down. And then they were just beside themselves that, that we would be so interested in their program and what they were doing. And thank you for being camp counselors and for being willing to participate and be afraid and do it anyways. Even, even though sometimes we get to go places with the moms and it's fine. Moms are cool. So thank you. Yeah, yeah, okay. So thank you for, for spearheading it and bringing, bringing this together for so parents and families have different options.
Creating opportunities. It is so amazing. I, it, it just, I'm impressed, you know, three grade schools, two high schools. We're looking at half the schools, nearly half the schools in the district that participated in some way. Um, that's just incredible. I'm looking forward to this next year.
We've wrangled air to work in kitchen next year.
And yes, the parents were hustling.
Yeah.
All day long.
Yeah.
There was a lot of parents.
It was a great effort, for sure. Yeah, it was pretty great. And we have, um, we had to actually, for this coming spring, we booked two dates because we have five elementaries that want to do it now.
Awesome.
So we have two different ways to book, both Coil and Washington.
That's awesome.
So thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to citizen comments. Um, and we have one citizen here, Monica Huey.
She'll be okay back there.
And you have three minutes.
Thank you. Sorry.
It's been a bit since we've had.
A citizen comment? Or just make, I feel like I make an annual appearance like as my, part of my, um, and I always debate if I'm going to read what I've written or if I'm just going to speak off the cuff. So I might do a little of both. Um, so my name is Monica Huey. Um, uh, thanks for having me. I have my assistant tonight, Mrs. Rose. My husband wasn't off work quite yet, so she came along with me. Um, Rose is a Lynch Lion Cub. She's in first grade. So I also have a student at, um, OMS. So, yeah, so thank you, everybody. Thanks for everything you do. Um, the reason that I wanted to come tonight, um, was specifically to talk about school safety and gun safety. Um, I know it's a topic we all think about a lot. Um, and I know it's important to everybody in the room. Um, first, uh, I wanted to acknowledge the work that has been happening in the district um, to protect our children and, uh, all of our staff. And I can tell at my daughter's school that the construction over the summer of like a dual entryway was completed. And so, um, I hope, uh, I wanted to thank everyone who voted for that bond that made all of those improvements. And I hope that everyone listening out there in the world will vote for the bond in November so that we can continue the really necessary and important work. Um, uh, what started me down this path to, to coming was I started thinking about the most recent, um, mass shooting in Georgia. And what struck me in particular about that was that they had a lot of safety precautions in place and everything went right, um, as far as their safety precautions worked. Um, yet still four people were murdered and many more were injured. Um, and one of the things, um, that was, um, the most important safety precaution was a silent panic alarm that had been in place for only a week. Uh, and it's credited with saving many lives during the tragedy. And we've all learned that time is of the essence and every second counts during a mass shooting event. Um, so I want to make sure our district has implemented every safety tool available as well. Uh, specifically, I've been learning about the new wireless panic alarm grant, which I'm sure you're all aware of. Um, it's also called Alyssa's Law. Um, and it was recently passed in Oregon and is now available. Uh, we can apply now for the grant for the money. Um, it was, uh, passed totally bipartisan, but I think Emerson Levy, our district fifty-three rep, definitely deserves a shout out for that. Um, and I want to thank all of the legislatures everywhere, uh, around our region that passed it. Um, I think it's now on us to actually implement it. So, um, the two thousand dollar grant is fully funded. And I would, I'm here to ask for Redmond School District to apply for the grant and to implement the silent alarm as soon as possible. Um, my understanding of how it works is that teachers and staff can wear, well, I'll finish this sentence. Um, that teachers and staff can wear an alarm on their lanyard, but in an emergency event, you can um, push it multiple times and it will alert, um, emergency responders and it will alert the entire school. So it's just like an immediate response. So, um, with that, I will let you guys go on with your night and take Rose home. But, um, yeah, please consider, uh, applying for that grant. I think it's really, um, important. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rose.
I would love it if she does that.
Um, Chad, you're ready for the end of the month report?
All right. As always, thank you for having me here. Um, kind of, uh, we talked last month, just kind of finishing up these projects, um, really summer, summer push. Um, you know, just a reminder, we had Hugh Hartman's HVAC project, um, for the dry side work there, Redmond High School's dry side HVAC project, seismic project at Tomlow, seismic project at John Tuck, um, and the installation of all the, or five, four of the vestibules and then changing outdoor hardware at Tuck to create an entry vestibule there. It was nice to hear, um, that it's noticeable. Um, I think the one at, the one at Terabon and the one at Lynch really stand out, um, and Redmond High School as well, um, as, as a difference maker. Um, for people to feel a lot more comfortable. So that's great to hear, um, that people already are liking it and appreciating those. Um, so kudos to you for, for implementing that. The projects actually went fairly well this summer. Um, there, those are really tough to do in such a short window. Um, so both at Hugh Hartman and Redmond High School right now, uh, Hartman's a little farther along, Redmond High School, we're really just finishing up the commissioning right now. Um, that is a consultant that we hired to come and make sure the HVAC system's doing what we want it to do. Um, so they go in and is, is this fan talking to this controller? Is this controller giving the right temperature, the right pressures, all of those things? Um, and so we're but, butting up that right now. Um, specifically Redmond High School. And then there's a few punch list items that'll come along the way as we have the engineers come back and do punch walks and post punch walks and we'll find different things that, that we need to change out. So, um, it's been a, it's been a battle to get those. You know, you find things along the, along the way, like a company that calls the day before our fans are supposed to be delivered, says they won't be coming for three weeks and managing those parts of those projects. So, um, we're really proud of getting those, those projects done. Uh, the seismic projects as well. You know, there's still some lingering punch list items that we got to get finished up. We'll look for some breaks to do that when, when students aren't there. So I was just talking to Dusty about some of the things that Tuck earlier, um, that, that we're aware of. And there'll be stuff that he sees right along the way that, hey, I didn't notice this before. Is this right? You know, and, and we'll get those taken care of as, as we do. Um, like I said, those summer pushes are, are tough. Uh, and then, you know, for now, it's, it's really just kind of buttoning up this bond with any additional efforts to finding, you know, little holes like in cameras. Um, you know, it's like, hey, there's the spot that we can't see. Um, and maybe getting a camera up there and really kind of cleaning up all of the stuff from, from this last bond and um, really kind of reconciling the budgets and seeing where we sit with everything. I do know that all four of those major projects did come under budget. How much we're, we're working through. Um, once we get final invoices and payouts in, um, and that money will, will go back to the bond effort, um, and, and be there for, for future years or however, however the district sees fit. So very successful summer. Um, a lot of work we got done this summer and, uh, we're just appreciative to, to have the opportunity to do this for you guys and, and for the district and the community as well. Any questions on anything? Anything you've seen, heard?
Hey Chad, um, I'm coming to you over the internet. Uh, I just wanted to say, uh, how, how I'm still so impressed with how you guys have been able to make these things happen, uh, with, with, uh, all the things at play and the timelines and the, uh, you know, stopping by John Tuck and seeing, uh, some of the phases, very close to opening of school. And, um, anyway, I just want to say how much I appreciate you guys and, and the work that you've done on this. It's pretty impressive.
Yeah, nerves get high in those last couple of weeks of August. There's a few of them in this room that can get us to that. Um, but you know, thank you, Michael. We, we appreciate it, but it, it's a team effort. It's, you know, from the district office to the staffs at the schools or the, the contractors. None of us can do it alone. And so it's a, it's a complete team effort to get all that stuff done and, um, and just kind of perform the way that we're hired to perform. So, but thank you for that. I appreciate that.
And I just want to acknowledge, um, the difficulty, I think, that I've learned about people going in and working on buildings that are old and working within that space as opposed to building something brand new. I mean, you guys are facing all kinds of challenges that you don't know about and that you're able to solve the problem um, as, as you do.
Thank you. Yeah. It's amazing what you find.
It is.
Tuck being the one, we found the most stuff unknown of all the other ones. As one can imagine, it's one of the older buildings in the school too. And, and even stuff from, from previous projects that never got done. You start kind of doing that archaeological investigation. You find a pipe. Why is this here? You look at, you know, twenty twelve plans or twenty eight plans or two thousand eight and they're like, oh no, that was supposed to be removed. But it never happened. And so you run into it and stuff you don't expect and you adjust. I mean, architects, the, the engineer, the contractors.
You kind of, you kind of like the challenge. Do you kind of like the challenge?
Absolutely. I wouldn't be here.
Okay.
I would be here.
Okay.
Um, I, yeah, I do, I do like remodels for that reason because they keep you on your toes.
Yeah.
Um, uh, yeah, I mean, new, new projects are great. Don't get me wrong. Um, but you know, it, it is, it's fun and it's rewarding. Um, at the end of the day, it's, it's a lot more rewarding than, than some projects that, you know, I've done in the past and, and previous companies. So, uh, I just want to thank you guys and appreciate it very much. We'll get this thing all closed out.
Is there anything on this, you know, final punch lists and all these sort of thing, final items that keeps you up at night?
No, actually, um, you know, very, very minor stuff. Um, whether it's some, some, some paint stuff or some, a little flooring stuff that didn't settle the way it's supposed to. Um, on the, on the HVAC projects, it's really kind of ductwork, you know, using the wrong seals, um, or the contractor. Like in some situations, you know, some of our subcontractors did, did something the way that they would, might always do it, but not the way the plans were set to do it. And so it's like, oh, you know, and people are honest about it, which is great. It's like, yeah, we totally missed that. Everybody's trying to work fast, didn't look back at the plans, confirm what they're supposed to do, just did it. And so that kind of stuff we have to fix, but it's minor in nature. We don't have to redo anything or reinvent the wheel. Um, let's just go clean up stuff that got missed along the way. So that, that's always a good thing. So it shouldn't linger. Sometimes these, especially commissioning, can linger out three, six, nine. We've seen it a year later. We're finally finishing up commissioning of a project. Um, but our contractor's been very good about it all summer long. It really starts from day one. And, uh, and so we'll get that cleaned up the next month. And be able to move on to the next one.
Terrific. Well, we've all kind of been doing road shows with the bomb coming up and, um, you know, new school year starting and things. And so I've had the opportunity to be at a number of the schools that now have new to them this year vestibules or the secure vestibules. And, uh, maybe it was predictable, maybe it wasn't. You, you just never really know what people are going to think. But, um, I have, was really impressed with people, A, noticing it and B, being pleased about its existence, right? It's like, you know, we're really happy to see this here. Lots of compliments about, you know, how well it was done, how well it was integrated into the school and so on and so forth. So, you know, it's really great to have something so functional and also well received.
Yeah, agreed. Yep. So proud of, proud of those. And, um, they look great. And I know there's always, everybody's got an opinion and you do.
And you never know.
And you deal with those, but, um, I think they turned out well and the, and the form and function of them is as intended. So that's really nice.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Chad.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad.
All right, the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four Division twenty-two report. Linda and Sharon.
You guys have been looking forward to this.
Yeah, I was putting the.
We booked it up as a special company in this year.
They get up and they turn it into lobby spaces. Kind of has both Terabon's and Lynch's. They've turned it into kind of lobbies for parents. And I think people kind of like it because they come in and it feels comfortable.
It's cozy and it's not so sterile. It doesn't, you don't dwell on kind of the reasons there.
Right. Have you seen the lightroom?
I haven't.
I've heard it's great.
Yeah.
All right. Great. We're sitting so long tonight. Keep up the trend. I'm sitting. I want to hear what you have to say.
Well, I think we were all here last year when we talked about Division, are the annual Division twenty-two uh, assurances report. And we usually do that in the fall. This is a little bit earlier. We typically do it in October, but Sharon and I will be presenting at a conference in October. And so, um, at the October meeting. So we're doing it a little early this year. Um, so, uh, some of this is going to feel like a repeat, but, um, we don't expect that you're going to remember all the details. So we're just giving it a quick overview. Um, the report for the Division twenty-two standards, just a reminder, is a leap back to the year prior. So we're talking about, um, looking at our Division twenty-two standards from twenty-three, twenty-four. Sometimes we get a little mixed up about that, but it bears repeating. And also in your board packet, you, um, have an executive summary that basically describes most of the stuff I'm going to say anyway. So, um, just a reminder that that's there. So just a quick overview on, uh, the standards and what they mean and what they are. A little lesson. So chapter, uh, five eighty-one, uh, is the, actually that's the Department of Education's, um, agency number. So that's what that's associated with. And then the, uh, Division twenty-two are the standards that are associated with, um, elementary and secondary education. There are actually twenty-six different divisions under the five eighty-one chapter. Um, but we're just going to focus on the fifty-six, uh, Division twenty-two rules. So the rules are the specific, uh, OARs that kind of guide, um, just serve as a basis and guide for, uh, elementary and secondary education. And, uh, and then what we're determining in this report and, and sharing in this report is our compliance with those rules. It's kind of a baseline for service across the state. So the rules are organized into four different sections. And those are the bigger headings, the teaching and learning section, uh, health and safety section, uh, district performance and accountability, and human resources and staffing. And, uh, the specific rules, and these are just examples of the fifty-six different rules that are in this year's report, um, fall into these, these are just examples of how they fall into those different categories. And again, you can see the specifics, specifics of that in the executive summary that I shared. And I believe it also has active links to those rules if you want to do some light reading. So there's sort of a combined accountability model for, um, for the, uh, Division twenty-two standards assurances. The local accountability is that, um, annually, we need to review our, um, compliance with those standards. And that includes standards that have been there for a long time and standards that are new um, or have been revised in some way. And you have to report that to the board at a public meeting by November first of each year. And then we also make that report available in both English and Spanish on our, uh, website. For the state accountability, ODE then reviews, we have to, um, submit that report to ODE by the fifteenth. And then they review every district's, um, every district's, uh, compliance toward those standards. And in areas where districts are reporting that they're out of compliance, they're required to submit, uh, plans for correction. And then ODE approves, reviews and approves those plans. Um, and then there's follow-up about, um, have you completed those plans? So that's the sort of shared responsibility that we have, um, under the area of compliance. It's important to note, even though we're using the word compliance, which doesn't really, um, inspire anybody, um, that really the when or the why is that these standards ensure that there's, uh, a high quality educational experience that's an equitable opportunities for all kids in all public schools in the state of Oregon. So that's, it's, it, it outlines the floor, not the ceiling, right? Um, but it means that a child could move to a school anywhere else or a district anywhere else in the state and the same opportunity should be available to them there um, through the, through what those rules designate as there would be where they came from. So, again, the floor, not the ceiling. Um, and it also provides us an opportunity as an organization, uh, to review our practices and make sure that they're aligned with, um, with the requirements for the state of Oregon. So, um, yeah. And then if we're out of compliance, and I mentioned this really quickly, any district that reports out of compliance, and many districts do, it's not, uh, it, it, it isn't necessarily, this sounds odd, our goal to be completely compliant in all standards because the standards change, practices change, condition, conditions change. Um, so this keeps us kind of nimble and, um, gives us an opportunity to reflect on how we can do a better job. But sometimes we're out of compliance. And if we are, then we come up with a corrective action plan. And again, we submit that to the Department of Education. They review it. They interact with us. Um, they provide ideas if they don't think our plan, uh, is going to get us where we need to be. And then they're circling back with us to make sure that that corrective action has taken place. And if it doesn't take place, um, and I can't imagine, I, I sort of can't imagine a world in which districts would have repeated problems. Um, but if it doesn't take place, one of the things potentially that's at stake is, that's at stake is, um, the withholding of school fund money. So, um, we will never be in that position because we would, of course, um, not want that to happen. So, um, we're always making sure that we're on top of it.
Who creates a Kappa if it's necessary? Does the state create that or we're responsible? Or we do that together with the, the Kappa? Corrective action plan.
Oh, yeah, we created, we created ourselves, um, and go through that. If we didn't work compliant, uh, we work with them to develop them and fill the plan. I kind of guess I'm going to bring with that. If we're out of compliance, it might, uh, promote audits from them considering what we're up to there. If we're out of compliance, it might uh, promote audits from them considering what we're up to there. So never happens.
And we'll talk about that in a minute because we're going to review the places we were out of compliance last year and um.
What the corrective plan was.
Some recent experience. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So uh, just shifting to uh, focus for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Again, this is a look back to last year. Um, there and you might recall, we had a brief discussion about this last year, that right after the pandemic. The requirement of the essential skills assessment at the high school level. Was uh, was waived during the time of the pandemic, which made sense. And then that waiver got extended. And it's extended both for English language learners and also um, just the regular assessment of skills in English. And so that's true for all districts across Oregon um, through the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year, at which point. Um, there will be a different plan to be determined. And um, so that shows up as an N A on our report, um, and on all reports. And again, that doesn't mean harkening back to my memory of our last year's conversation. That doesn't mean we are not uh, giving other assessments. Um, that was one of a number of things that we do to gauge whether students are um, graduation ready. So there are some new and revised rules that um, went into effect in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. One new, one revised. The menstrual dignity for students uh, is a new rule that was adopted um, by in October twenty-three. By the State Board of Education. And um, and the first time that districts are reporting on that is in this report, so this year. And then the health services rule was revised and the health services rule during the time of the pandemic was strongly associated. With the mitigation of um, the spread of diseases. And so if we had to have district level plan, each school had to have a plan articulating in great detail. All of the um, things that we were doing on the preventative and also the reactive side. So that started to morph after um, the pandemic. And it became, it has become now a broader kind of plan that encompasses communicable disease and our partnership. With uh, the county and other local partners and how we're broadling um, for any communicable diseases. How we're working both preventatively and um, and then actively if there is an outbreak. Um, so those are the only two that that are uh, new revised. Our process to ensure compliance is not just a one and done process. It's sort of always ongoing. Um, and this is in your executive summary as well, but um, regularly district leadership. Um, meets with both regional and state partners and those uh, meetings often or almost always. Include updates to state initiatives and checkpoints for compliance and um, trends that are. Um, coming. And so that we're constantly in the work of that sort of at the state and regional level. And that's down to, you know, specific like our English language learner um, populations and our federal programs. And um, special education. So we're meeting with um, Java-like partners in the region and across the state. Um, we also have an ongoing kind of internal, what we call calibration. So as things are updated, let's say a board policy gets updated and we need to update our practices. Then we are, we have a sort of a cadence of accountability, I want to say um. Regular meetings with our leadership team, both at the district level and at the school level. Um, to make sure that we're providing information about uh, changes in practices that are aligned with changes in policy. So that's happening in real time, all the time um, and ongoing. And then it also includes that sort of what we call more formal review, which happens annually in the fall. And typically what we do, and there were fifty-six standards this year. And they naturally sort of embed in areas of leadership for different um, district level leaders. And so. Leaders are assigned the responsibility of reviewing the O A Rs and any revisions or updates to the O A Rs. And then reviewing policy, practices, procedures, making sure we're in alignment with that. And then where there might be a question about alignment or where there's uh, where we know we're out of alignment. Then we're having a discussion as a cabinet level team about what we need to do um, to fix that. So that then is, that generates uh, the final report. Uh, so I, after I said that we don't necessarily expect to be in compliance on all standards. It just so happens that this year we are in compliance with all fifty-six of the standards, which. Again, feels good, but I didn't even want to put a little celebration thing because we don't consider it not a celebration if we're out of compliance. Because we're out of compliance, that means we've identified an area that we need to fix and we're fixing it. So. That would be the hope. Um, and so this year, that just so happens that we're in compliance in all fifty-six of those standards. So getting back to what Eric was asking about, I want to um, just remind us about the. Corrective action that was implemented in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Based on our being out of compliance in two different areas. The first was the independent adoption of instructional materials for our online program. Uh, and that was a a kind of a new standard to us. And so there wasn't a ton of guidance. And so we ran a process that was sort of anchored a little bit in some familiar practices with um, instructional materials adoption. And then uh, some new learnings related to uh, what to do for digital materials specifically. So that um, was reported to the board in the spring of last year and you approved at your May twenty-ninth meeting. The adoption of that new curriculum, which is actually not new, but it was the one we had been using. Um, and so our status for that for this year's report. Will be um, something called implementing approved corrective action. And that's actually a designation from O D E when we circled back with them and said, we're now compliant um, with this standard. That um, rather than saying we were out of compliance last year, um. They said that we should uh, have this designation instead. And that same thing applies to the second case, we were out of compliance, which was our physical education requirements for grade six through eight. And um, if you recall, we weren't uh, our master schedules were in our electives, the sort of the nexus of those two things. Were getting in the way of us providing a minimum of a hundred and fifty minutes a week. And I highlighted a week. Because in the first round of that executive report, I discovered it when I was uh, doing this presentation. The word a week was left off there. So it looked like we were providing at least a hundred and fifty minutes. The school year, right? So not in compliance. Um, so uh, that has now been corrected. And what's in your packet should be the right.
I'd like to mention, this was an extraordinarily difficult thing to correct. We had to restructure the entire middle school schedules, how they were. Dave worked extraordinarily hard on that to get um, along with the L or the middle school principles, get that in place. Uh, there was a lot of changing of schedules and offerings to children, you know, so it was a, it was a challenge to get this to.
And that is sort of getting back to what you had asked before, Eric, that in our partnership with O D E. You know, they work at P E uh, minutes. It's an area that they're familiar, uh, because many school districts have struggled especially. At the middle school level. And so they came to the table with ideas and then we came to the table with ideas. And Dave did a nice job of navigating some back and forth conversations and very careful reading of the law and. Um, finding the just right place to land. Um, Dave, do you want to just say a couple of words about just how that's going? In this first few weeks of school and.
I I just feel like with the tenure, you can say. I don't need to do it in the weeds, but I I do think that we made some adjustments in staffing. We added additional, shipped additional M T over to P. Uh, um, at Obsidian. Um, and then what we, what we're wrestling around about is we didn't want to win the student option. There's always someone get elective options for students in middle school. We had kids who wanted the band, which means a lifetime individual skill and asset for music. And then also kids who are taking Spanish, which we also think was critical. So it became an equity issue, which I know is back to the state. But we went back and forth and found a way for those students to still maintain their end Spanish while. So we got a little bit creative and got a new O D E, but I threw some online P E, which is legal. And it wasn't approved by the state. So there's about twenty kids that are able to keep those two other classes available.
Well, congratulations for finding clever solutions. I, it's been said tongue in cheek before. And but I I'm actually serious in the question. Is there any possible way we can double duty things? You know, is marching band considered P E? Um, you know, can.
So it has to be a license.
It's been a lot of time, right? It could cost or you can't.
I'm thinking ph- physics and physical ed could really go well together.
Well, I mean, and the interesting thing about this law, this, this law's been on the books for over ten years. And the educational community has worked to delay it for a very long period of time, precisely because of these conflicts. Um, there's conflicts of having enough gym space in lots of school districts. There's conflicts of uh, electives and opportunities for kids. There's conflicts of having enough licensed teachers, uh, conflicts in just getting kids to learn how to read. Only takes so much time.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm thinking. So we don't take away from precious academic time. I mean, not dissuading. I was all about P E, right? It's great, but uh, you know, it's, it breaks my heart to think that to be in compliance, we have to frankly compromise on some academics. And it's like, wow, how can we figure out how to do both?
Sure. Yep. But this was not something we we, as an educational community, got delayed for a long period of time, but um. They refused to let it go. And so this is one of the only things in in um, the books that has a specific minute requirement to it. So we were able to share our plan to some other districts that could also offer this in the support. Because again, we made an issue of that, we, it's, we want them to do access to those pieces, not compromise with the passion for itself.
We had to do a little convincing of.
I went back, I went back to what.
We were seeing the law, yeah. But we got there at the end of the day and so that.
I'm friends with.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, so that same status applies um, per O D E's recommendation that we're implementing approved corrective action. So. Um, so those, that's a good story. We were able to bring some things back into compliance. So looking ahead then for next year, this is just a couple of heads up of things that um, we're working on this year in order. Um, that will show up in the compliance report for next year. So one of them uh. Is that during the course of this year, it says beginning, but we have um, time during the course of the year. To um, provide a planned K twelve instructional program for the recently adopted social emotional learning framework. And uh, Tammy uh, Nakamura, um, our director of student support is hard at work on that. Um, with others and will provide a report to the board probably, you know, February-ish. Um, about what that plan looks like. Um, it's pretty multifaceted. And then also um, a plan for uh, the high school, which would include personal finance, education and higher. Education and career path skills um, content standards. And then further the diploma requirements associated with those standards. Um, so we're uh, we're working on that. And so you'll hear more about that um, in the course of this year. And also in the report um, for next year. And then um, also uh, districts have relied related to modified diploma, extended diploma and certificates of attendance. We have uh, the obligation to annually provide parents information about different diploma availability and requirements. And we do that through our high school um, course catalogs. Um, but we did a quick review and I don't believe we have something in there about our certificates of attendance. And so we're going to make sure that shows up uh, somewhere. Whether it's uh, most appropriate in the catalog or somewhere else, um, we'll make sure that that's um, in compliance this year. And then finally, under substance use prevention and intervention planning, there's a requirement of a minimum of one. O D E opioid prevention education lesson in grade six, seven, eight and once in high school. And so we're just doing a quick audit of our materials and our practices and where and if. Uh, we're not in compliance on that, we'll make sure that we are. So those are examples of, you know. Uh, good things, right? That we're constantly making sure that we're in alignment. So we don't lose any state money and we provide good standard education for all kids. Uh, so this is just a reminder, but we added also that Equity Advisory Committee that is um, part of, it it's one of those fifty-six. Standards. And the reason it wasn't listed um, in this uh, presentation template is because. Depending on your district's size, there are different timeframes for the implementation of that. And we're a smaller district and so. Ours will be implemented um, mature uh, ish. And then the rest of those were things that I just talked about, but I also wanted to circle back on instructional materials adoption because at the board. Um, whole work session this summer, you asked about that. And so I just wanted to show that. Uh, for science and for health, those are the next two adoptions that are on the adoption, annual adoption cycle. Um, we've applied for a postponement for each one of those. And so science, we're doing that adoption this year. Um, for materials to be in classrooms by um, fall of twenty twenty-six. And then for health, that'll be the following year. Um, for that uh, to be that update to be in classrooms by fall of. Twenty twenty-seven. So you'll be hearing more about the science adoption for this year in the relatively near future. And that I think is the very quick uh, overview of all of that. Are there any other questions that you have or comments in the public?
I have a question. I was listening to the radio on the way over here and then just happened to have a story about the uh, personal finance component. It's going to be added. Is that, do, do we have to then look at curriculum to adopt? Or is that going to slide into somebody else's course? Or how's that, what's that going to look like? My dad, my dad would be super happy to see that he was a personal finance teacher. It's very sad to see it go away. He would be very happy.
Maybe we should bring him in and have him be part of it.
Well, that would be delightful, except he's passed away.
So Dave, some of that is in, sort of in place already partially.
Teach some personal finance, I think the difference is. Has to have a trimester, so it's embedded in different spots. Um. We're in conversations about that right now. The state has, I don't know if they did a contract, but it's called Money Vehicle. It's a, it's a curriculum that the state's operating for free for us to use online and in person, in person. So we have a financial algorithm that last we taught, but it's just, we're trying to figure out what that looks like. Because then again, with more requirements, plus more restraints on what we can provide in staffing and who's going to teach it and what that looks like. So it's a little bit of of both, using what we currently have, but we have to have a full trimester of just personal fans, which is different for us.
And that's something for you to be able to realize. When you get a new requirement in and add something new in, I mean, something has to go away to allow that to happen. And so in the end of the day, that changes kids' choices and electives and possibilities. So it's not just an add that's something new, they didn't give us any more money for another teacher for that. It simply changed it. So we have to make different choices of staffing and stuff going forward.
So the personal thing is that we offered before, was it an elective or it was just a less duration of the content? Or or both?
It was an elective option, then also some personal finance embedded within like an algebra class, but it wasn't. Because we, it gets complicated because in the system, there has to be, it was called N C S codes, how the state tracks. Higher even credit for what course. So um, there's a code there, but we used it for some elective like algebra, personal finance courses. And then some, which some we just have personal finance embedded within business, like business, intro to business class. And there's some personal finance standards embedded, but it wasn't coded correctly to meet this requirement. And that's what came out this summer. T S V C had to go through and determine how do we, what's the teacher licensure requirements? What N C S codes, C eighteen, how's that going to look? So we tried to plan for this last year to get ahead, but they didn't have that information out until the summer. So we're in the process of planning.
Thank you. Sharon, was there anything more you wanted to add or emphasize?
No, I'm just, it's always good to say we're compliant to the the laws of the land. Um, but the industry group, our team continues to. Make sure that we run a great school district. And I do want to comment on, let's just call it the safety floor, it's not the ceiling. It's the base level of what we do. Um, but it's hardly all we do. It's the base level of what we do, um, but it's hardly all we do. Thank you for, Linda and the team, going through.
Okay, we'll move on to executive limitations. Um, we're looking at number six, the communication to the board. And number seven, technology. And I think in the packet, these are the ones that um, that had some language updated as the result of the discussion at the work session. Hopefully you all had a chance to review those. Any questions or concerns or discussion on communication to the board, executive limitation?
And to the best of our knowledge, these are the updates we requested last time, right? I mean, I I like what it looks like, I just don't remember.
Yeah, the, I think the red reflects the changes that we asked.
Just so you know, Michael's not on anymore.
Okay, bye, Michael.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to approve uh, BL six, communication to the board as presented.
Hearing of the motion moved and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes for two zero. All right, executive limitation, number seven, technology, discussion or questions?
I'd like to make on a motion to approve um, BL seven, our technology executive limitation as presented.
A second. BL seven has been moved and seconded. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? BL seven passes. All right, um, so this next agenda item is a result of the conversation that happened two board meetings ago or two meetings ago and then a deeper discussion at the work session. Um, floating the idea of not having the board issue proclamations. So I don't. It is there on the agenda, so we would either make a motion to make that true or we could take it off the agenda and put it up at another meeting. Um, but just as a reminder, the discussion was pretty robust and I appreciated it. Um, I floated this idea just because I think that it de-escalates some of the potential that hasn't happened. Um, but potential conflict that could happen. And in this time of strife, um, I floated this idea just to prevent us from getting into a position of amplifying certain groups. And that I don't find them to be necessary, so.
Yeah, I feel the same as I did last time. I just think it's leaves room for there to be divisiveness and politicize things that we just keeps us away and distracted from the actual work that we should be doing as a school board.
So this would require a motion and a vote.
How would you vote? I'm I motion that the Redmond School Board does not issue proclamations.
Can I second? I will second that.
That was difficult.
Okay, any further discussion or comments before we take them?
I think it's important to recognize that, A, this hasn't happened repeatedly. It's not something that we deal with often. I think it's important for people to have a voice and if they want to put something on the agenda, that that still happens. Um, so will we be still honoring that?
Um, any board member has the right to talk with the board chair and myself, put something on the agenda. There's nothing, nothing changes in the, my understanding of your motion, um, any board member, we have a process for putting anything on the agenda. I don't think that changes.
Yeah, I just happened to be in a room full of veterans and their families and the city of Redmond did issue a proclamation. Um, and it it meant something to every single person in that room. But the city of Redmond would honor those veterans and coming home. So I think they do have a a purpose and a time.
And I I would, I would agree that proclamations like veterans, I just think there's, there, there are other proclamations that are brought forward by individuals or groups of people, that they mean something to one group of people and they mean something very different to another group of people. And the the one is, both are right, right? But so, um, I'm gonna call the question because I don't wanna have this discussion anymore. We've had it pretty robustly, so I'm gonna call the question. So conversation, discussion's over, I'm calling the question, open the votes. So the motion on the floor is, um, Redmond School Board will no longer be issuing proclamations. So all those in favor of Amanda's motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed? Yep, so nothing happens.
Um, I I would be willing to consider if we had something a little more explicit, um, permitting the public to, you know, state a proclamation um, during comment time. Um, and so they could still come to us and then, and but our policy would be the same as what you've described. We we would neither um, endorse nor reject such a.
And that prohibiting us or discussion, having us decide not to issue proclamations would not have changed, does not change public comment at all.
I just, it it needs to be explicit.
So we can say that we no longer make proclamations that we welcome public comment on things they think are important. I don't know how to phrase that second part, right?
So it really needs maybe a little more work and I can offer some suggestions if you'd like. Um, at a different time, but I'd like to move on.
Thank you. Yep, okay, thank you. All right, um, consent agenda, Sharon.
All right. Are there any questions uh, about the consent agenda?
No, but I was super impressed with that. Was it twenty thousand dollars by the FFA loans?
You'd like to all go ahead and read through the.
Yeah, just a, a quick summary.
Um, a four thousand gift to Redmond High School uh, for the leadership program by the business club. A twenty thousand um, dollar donation to the FFA program um, by the FFA alumni. So yes, fantastic.
Sorry, where, where's that? Sorry, who are they? I mean, it's just, they have, you know, because everybody that's in FFA is an FFA alumni, so who?
There's an alumni organization.
Ah.
And they, and they meet fairly regularly and they talk about issues of how to support the kids.
I see, okay. I think it's awesome. I just like.
It's a, it's a really neat organization. And and it's a great way for people to get involved with, you know, loading egg and students. Um, anyway, let's continue. Um, a gift to the Redmond High School Football Program of two thousand six hundred thirty-eight dollars with Spats Spitz Living Trust. A gift to RHS uh, by Layout Events. Um, oh, for track field, uh, for eleven hundred and thirty dollars.
Do you know if this is where the kids volunteered for, to help at like the festivals and stuff there? Do you know?
I don't know.
Events organization you under, yeah.
Did we get a, did we, how much we got for them? We get that information for them. Um, a gift for RHS um, from Summit Health Management um, of five hundred dollars for their rugby football team. Uh, gift to John Tuck Elementary, funds for summer reading program for incoming first graders, the John Tuck PTO, uh, for twenty-six hundred dollars. That's our donations. And again, our community is extremely um, uh, gracious with us. And we really appreciate the support all of what we do. Any other questions about the consent agenda?
I just have one comment about the student conduct on bus, school buses and discipline procedures for stu- district-approved student transportation. I happened to run into the mom that showed up and I let her know about these changes and she was very, very very, very tickled. So um, thank you for that change to those two policies.
Transportation, I'm just noticing on the the personnel reports, the HR reports.
Yes.
And then I'm, I'm noticing that the buses are running late for whatever reason sporadically.
Um, we have had, and Tony can speak to this a lot, um, we've had a lot of changes in personnel and we've had a lot of changes in routing. Um, we've had a lot of of very specific quest, requests, bus stops, spec- landing, everything else. And it has been a challenge for our transportation performance to meet that.
Okay.
Tony, you wanna add to that?
It's pretty common at the beginning of the school year, there's tons of changes. Um, every time we get um, a new bus stop request from a family or we get a new special ed student that needs special transportation. Uh, that takes time because that one kid can do six routes. And then every time we do that, we have to notify each one of those families of the change. It's also have to give time for families to make those adjustments. So it's getting closer to being um, set and smooth, but yeah, it's the beginning of the year is um, it's, it's difficult. We're actually looking at making some changes for next year.
We probably have a, a review, transportation. Are you on our list somewhere?
Is transportation gonna be on the ELS somewhere?
I mean, it should be.
Well, we have a, we have an operation. Uh, but transportation is uh, it's an ongoing logistical challenge.
Mike, can I ask a question about the transportation? This is, this comes from that email from that mom about her middle school track person. Um, I just wanna confirm and make sure that everybody is aware that we're not providing transportation for competitions for anybody but varsity football. Is that true?
That is not true.
Oh, okay.
No, we are providing transportation for our athletes whenever possible.
All sports teams, all?
Yep, there's just times where we can't, where we don't have drivers available, but we make an effort to provide transportation.
Okay.
Uh, as I understand it, that's what Ben Lapine's doing. They don't transport for anybody inside Central Florida.
Oh, I've heard that, actually.
I, I, that's, I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's, I ran into the Assistant Director of Transportation from Ben Lapine, random. But that even came up. And so I asked her how they were dealing with it and she said that they were, they were providing transportation for more than just varsity so, sports.
I'm not sure. We've got some people that work in this building.
Yeah.
Students in bed who have struggles giving their kids, especially like those old track needs, because they have to go transport them, so.
So that mom.
It's a problem.
Right, so that mom, um, we are providing transportation for middle school athletics when possible.
When possible.
Okay. And do they know, how far in advance do they know that, when that's gonna happen?
Um, we usually lean towards there's not transportation and then if we can, we do.
Okay.
Day up to do those drivers' call and say, or those types of situations, so. They do the best they can, but and we really, really try. Um, I don't think we've ever self-transported outside of Central Florida. But if we have to pay for charters.
Mm-hmm.
So.
So that's a budgeting issue, if we wanted to go down that road.
We paid over sixty thousand dollars in charters last year.
It's just, um, it's just a sad, it's this mom was, it was a sad, a sad email. Because she's a working mom and she can't trans- and so we're looking at, you know, at extracurricular activities being only available to a very specific group of folks.
Yeah, we had the same complaints last year, especially with middle school soccer.
Yeah.
Uh, we heard a lot of complaints about that, very similar kind of. And as Tony says, we are really doing the best we can.
And I will say, parents are su- supportive, I mean, for the most part. And and we talked about, remember, we had a discussion about the transportation policy too. Um, it was, it was maybe a few months ago, but it was in committee. Um, and it, we were talking about self-transport and and the the issues and the hurdles that come with that. But I think over, overall, it's been my experience in those situations, because I've been in it myself, where I, I'm in one town and another kid needs to be somewhere else and parents chip in and help, so. Um, I hope that that's the, the community that we live in. You know, only two months out of, out of Obsidian Middle School and I, I would like to think, I don't know what middle school, I don't, I didn't get the email. Um, so, um, I I would like to hope that that's still the collaborative spirit that we have and making sure that kids get.
Yeah, I, I think that's probably true, the majority of the time, there're just some, some parents and this particular parent might not feel like that's her, that's not her, her MO, she's not coming on that space, so.
I get it.
Yeah. Tony, thanks for doing that hard work. Oh, okay. Any other questions about the consent agenda?
I'm going to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
The consent agenda has been moved and seconded. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Fantastic. Um, superintendent up and board updates. Sharon, would you like to start?
Um, we've got a great start. Yeah, it's been, I've been out, talking with principals and with them, I have my question, well, how's it going? And they all respond kinda like this. The left, the right, and then they're like. It's like everybody's a little afraid to jinx it. Um, and that's, that's been kinda funny, but they'll have that, that similar reaction.
I asked Cindy today, when I saw her in the lobby, how things are going, and she said, awesome, except for today. Okay, well, at least I didn't jinx it.
Yeah, yeah. And so, yeah, we had, we had some really good stuff. Of course, there's bumps along the way as we go through things. I've written to some of you, uh, uh, written to you about some of them. We've had some challenges for sure going forward. Um, uh, but we're adapting and we're continuing to to work through some of the hard stuff. Um, generally though, ninety-five percent of it is going well. Um, we continue to work through some transportation issues, really around what Tony was talking about. Uh, the bond work with Wellness Center, uh, we're seeing good results out of that. Uh, the system in Hugh Hartman is getting balanced, getting kind of ready to go. Uh, you know, that we put five million dollars in that, in that school and you go and you look and you can't even tell. Uh, which is kind of a shame, because it's a, if you like to, like the public to see what they paid for, but um.
It's totally a shame next time they ask for money.
Right, right. And so anyway, the, the, but the system is there and the contractors did a great job there. Uh, it's a lot of self-reconstruction, it was, Chad was indicating, uh, there were some little stretches in the last second to get some things done. Um, and there's still some things that are needing to get done, we're working on it, but it's working. Uh, enrollment wise, we're sitting about eighty students over what we projected. And it kinda moves a little bit um, back and forth day to day. Uh, that's about one point four percent. So that's healthy, that's nice. Um, about forty-four of those kids are in the sixth grade. Kids that were not quite sure where they came from. As I talk to the principals, I'm hearing a lot of um, people moving in and out of the area. Seem to be quite a few move-ins. Uh, Cindy was telling me that she's getting a whole bunch of people who are moving from Texas and Florida and showing up in Quiver River Ranch, moving to that area. I don't know what's driving people, but it's been.
Driving people.
That would not have been my guess.
Uh, but there's, but we're, we're getting people from out of there. We haven't done any kind of inventory yet, see what that looks like. But I'm curious, if we pull the data to see if we can figure out where people have come from. That's interesting. But anyway, so we continue to vary. Uh, is it a big variance in the sixth grade? Um, however, that's a nice place to be. It's a little bit over what we, what we planned on. Our classes are full. Um, we've got a great thing going on. Um, we've been doing a lot of bond work, as you know, and many of you have as well. Um, Liz and I and a few others of you and and we've spent a whole bunch of time and Eric has spent a whole bunch of time at open houses, passing out flyers. Uh, at the last week at the Sage Open House, six hundred and fifty people came through. Uh, managed to get a flyer and I think every, every family's hand as they went through, so that was handy. Um, and so we're getting the word out, but we still have, and and we get a lot of positive results when we talk to people. But it's still not penetrating people's consciousness. The, the big problem we have right now, just getting the information out. And so that's, that's kind of the big challenge right now. So we're working on that. So that's most of it. Any questions, Ruth?
No, I, I, I know I've mentioned it before, but I, I wanted to comment, your, I, I call them executive summaries. I don't know what, your, your weekly updates, I, I love them. I really, you know, being a little disconnected, not having child in the district and things, um, it really helps me to have an idea of what's going on and, um, I think it's, they're reasonably thorough. And I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Oh, statistic I did here this week, it was interesting. Uh, Carrie, you had asked me last year about newcomers, how many newcomers we have in the district? Oh, statistic I did hear this week that was interesting. Uh, Carrie, you had asked me last year about newcomers, how many newcomers we have in the district. Um, got that number today. Um, in the last two years, we have 151 people who were new to the country that were in our school.
To the country?
To the country, yeah. Within the last two years.
I'd be curious to what that looks like across the state. But you don't have to entertain that question.
Yeah, I know, I don't know.
That's fine. You know, I'll always have one more question.
Is that, Eric, are you, are you done?
Oh, no, I don't know. Real, real quick.
Okay.
Um, so my, my focus has been, um, you know, two-pronged, the same thing though, really. It's, uh, you know, beginning of the school year with the open houses. I've had an opportunity, uh, thankful to go and, and meet with Principal Grant at, um, again, that was really nice. Uh, unfortunately, that was the night of their, uh, open house, which was the same as, as Elton Gregory. And so I missed their open house, but got to meet with him, which was nice. I, I didn't know him previously. Um, Elton Gregory got to go to their open house. It was before we had the materials, but I got to network with people and talking about, about the bond and, um, always a positive experience. Really enjoy that facility. Uh, Tara Bond, I spent, um, with Charan and my wife came as well and they gabbed and I handed out.
Eric did a brain job handing out flyers.
But anyway, uh, no, we all handed out flyers and, uh, anecdotally, my observation, as Charan said, uh, shocking, like I would say 90% of the people that I spoke to were unaware there is a bond that's out there. Um, now also shockingly pleasant was people were very receptive to my pitch about the bond. And so that was really encouraging, but I was just shocked at how few people knew that there's a, you know, a bond that's going to be on the ballot. Um, so we got Tara Bond and then, um, I, uh, joined Tony and Kathy and, um, and, um, uh, Carrie at the Deshues Republican precinct captains meeting. Uh, and, uh, again, this is, uh, you know, a very fiscally conservative group. Um, I think they're solidly on board with our bond. They understand the need and, um, was really impressed response to that. And also there was, uh, Parks and Recs, Parks and Rec folks for their levy. And, um, I kind of figured that that wouldn't be very popular. And interestingly enough, at least with the people in the room, it was pretty positive as well. Um, you know, because having gone after a bond, now they're after an operating levy. And, um, there's a lot of money tied in there. And so we're pretty interested to see that there were support there as well. And it's a little bit of a tangent, but I think that, um, like I said, they're, they're with us on the bond. So it's a good thing.
One thing, um, Katie did mention was that her biggest concern with the Parks and Rec operating levy was, um, just voter apathy. So much like you're saying, like people just are not aware, that they're just, their minds aren't in that, in that space yet, I guess, or not at all. I mean, I'm on doors and people are like, nah, I don't vote. They, they just don't. So, um.
I met a lot of people that over the years. It's like, oh, yeah, I can vote.
Yeah, that's, that's my, that's how I make a statement is by not voting.
Yeah, I guess. Um, so, um, I've been to football games, handing out flyers. Um, and, um, Eric, I don't know why we're having trouble remembering each other's names.
Just tame the nate text.
Around.
Anyways, uh, as we went to the, I was, I was pleasantly surprised as well. They, um, the presentation was well received, I think, and um, there, you had, they had good questions and, um, staff was able to answer them and, yeah, they, they did a good job. So um, I appreciate them stepping into that, that arena and. It was interesting. I sat in the Senate or, yeah, a joint Senate House Committee meeting in Salem on Monday and I was listening to them. Uh, it was on education and they were talking about um, attendance, which is something that Redmond School District has put their thumb on the scale. Or, um, and it made me think of Mr. Grant and what they're doing. And I'm just listening and I'm thinking, why doesn't anyone call us? And see what we're doing over here? Because we're doing some really good things. And so.
We're doing amazing things. And they'll, they call when the numbers come out.
Okay, okay, okay. They delayed those numbers again, it sounds like. So.
I don't want to interrupt, but I have a question right to that.
It will take the eighth piece of 93's, uh, date has kind of pushed it into the other buildings as well. And so all of our secondary schools are taking on that idea.
Yeah, good. That's awesome. And there, again, I, I think when we started that conversation too, it was more of like, we're, we're not going to move the needle much on this. And then all of a sudden, you did, you did it. Like, so I'm sitting there thinking, wait. I think, I think somebody over here has, might have an idea for you.
Well, we actually look at most of our statistics, we, we.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's good. So that's my, that's my key data update. I don't.
Oh, you're, thank you, Carrie. I, I just had a question. So, um, there's this issue frankly with school districts and following some of these good ideas. And I think that, you know, maybe some of it is, is, uh, you know, tribalism, they, they, they don't want to share maybe. Um, but like within charter schools, when charter schools do something well in their initial charter, there's an opportunity to apply for what they call a dissemination grant. And it is a grant that's funded to them to share the good ideas that they've had and that have worked well. Is there that kind of thing that we can apply for that we could say, you know, do a little bit of a road show and maybe?
Not a grant, but there's conferences. Uh, if you recall, Lynn and I presented at the COSA conference in winter time last year. Uh, I presented at the national, one of the national conferences. We will present at another national conference, or Oregon schools come to those conferences. Um, we, we do present and we have the opportunity. Um, what people take from that is, is always a question. And there's small groups that, that meet together. There's a group of superintendents that are doing student work. We meet together every so often and chat about things. But it's, it, it looks very different from place to place. It really does.
Well, and I'd be curious to know too. I don't think there was anyone on that side of the mountain that was represented on, maybe in the committee, they did a lot of work.
Are you talking about the education committee?
Yeah.
It's a little cloudy.
Yeah, so, um, that, that was the other thing. I'm like, wait, like all the people that got up and presented, I, I'm learning how this works, but um, the people, all the people that got up and presented were on the west side of the mountains.
Yes.
But keep up the good work because I'm proud. I was proud to sit in that meeting and say, oh, wow.
Thank you. Amanda.
Um, everything I think, uh, got to go to Hugh Hartman for my first time ever. I was so excited. Um, Trevor and Jen gave me a grand tour and it was just really exciting. It was super cool. My favorite part was watching like the brand new kids like who hadn't likely not been exposed to Spanish before, like sit there and understand what the teacher was saying when she was telling them to like come sit on the rug, put down your things. And I'm like, they've been here a week. And so that was really fun. I enjoyed that at the school. Um, and just same thing, like what you said, like everyone's really excited about this year that I've talked to. And so that was really engaging. I got a cool opportunity at Ben Lapine Schools, Black Family and Student Union put on, uh, they showed a documentary in Bend. It was, uh, Black Girl in Suburbia, which was just a really cool insight into what it's like to um, be a racial minority in a really, um, homogeneous, racially homogeneous area. And so that was really, um, enlightening. And I appreciated that school. I felt it was neat that they opened it up and had it available to um, not just there, they do it at the Tower Theater. So well attended, lost people there. And then I went to the city council and I said, when, um, they supported our bond, but I didn't want to say like, that was really cool. I think that Tobias did a nice job of like voicing their support and um, yeah, everyone was smiling and nodding and then glad that they made it so public and took a moment to acknowledge the importance of it at city council. I appreciate that.
That was last night, right?
Yeah.
Um, thank you. So I went to, um, Ridge Views and Tom McCall's Open Houses. Ridge View had an open house model that was really interesting. They had, you know, departments doing presentations. So you would go see the English department. Um, you weren't just going around to see different teachers. They, so they presented as teams and it, it was very nicely done. Um, Tom McCall was just organized chaos. There's all those little peoples and, and Kona Ice and that just chaos ensued. Uh, but it was fun. And I did hand out flyers and, and yes, it was interesting. Um, I'd give people, you know, I'd ask, can I give you my 30-second elevator speech? And they said, yes. And then by the time it was over, they were like, yep, I'm on board. So yeah, it's a matter of getting in front of people. So thank you for taking the flyers out and I, I have a whole box of them and of course I forgot. So um, if you are going, if you need more cards or if you're going to be someplace and you want cards, we just let me know and I'll get them to you because I forgot, I was supposed to bring.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Like, is there an organized effort for canvassing, like?
Um, a little bit, not yet. There's, uh, so there are some groups that are going to be taking um, taking out the lit with their lit.
But not specifically.
Um, we probably are not going to do, the PAC's probably not going to do door knocking, but, but focus on text banking and phone banking. Um, we have a, a volunteer signup link that Kelly, um, put together. Did I send that to you then?
I haven't seen any, I have seen nothing.
We, it's, this has been really hard. It's been hard. Um, trust me. So they do, Kelly did, Kelly Jenkins, who used to be our PIO when I first was elected. Um, she works for Jeremy Wright's communications team and she's been sort of doing some of this backstage work. So she has a Google form that we sent out to the, to the association. I need to send, I'll send it out to you guys. And you can sign up for things to, to how do you want to volunteer? Um, so I'll, I'll do that. I'll remember this here.
And so that's, the PAC has to do this, this like, so we can't, there's nothing like on the website, like if I were curious.
We have a, we have a website as a PAC. I'm sorry, PAC has a website now, yeah. And so that's, that's there and there's QR codes on the flyers to.
I'll, yeah, I'll send the.
Okay.
QR code to go.
Yeah. I'll send you the, and I'll send you the website. I'm sorry.
But I am presenting on this, uh, at the, at the, uh, Retirement Center, not Retirement Center.
Oh, Senior Center.
Senior Center, thank you. The Senior Center on Friday. Yeah, we're on the same stage. So there's a whole thing that's, and that's sponsored by the, the REA, the, uh,
Rotary, Kiwanis.
Kiwanis Rotary, a whole bunch of folks doing that. Two week, two Fridays in a row. First is on state candidates and ballot measures. Um, and then in bonds and the second one is on city things, you know, the city council, mayor, like.
So I'll get you guys that, I'll get you guys those, um, links. But I also would like to issue a challenge to my fellow board members. Um, the last bond that was put forward, um, I was the only bond member or board member to donate any money. So I would like to challenge my fellow board members to match my $250 donation to the PAC to help get this bond across the finish line. And the website, PAC website will have a donation link. So. Um, I am going to be judging a mock congressional hearing tomorrow at Ridgeview High School at 7:30 in the morning.
I took the leadership.
What?
I took the leadership.
Yeah. It's a little early for me. Um, I think, I think that's all. But the PAC is, you know, they're doing a lot of work. So if you're looking for someplace to do, donate all your extra time, you can sign up. Um, and lastly, I do want to acknowledge that this is, we are in the middle of banned books week. Um, just a little, some statistics from the American Library Association. Um, last year in 2023, highest number of challenged books ever documented was an increase, uh, over 2022 by 92% in public libraries and 11% in school libraries. And 47% of those challenged titles represent the lives, lived experiences of LGBTQIA+ and BIPOC individuals. So, um, I'm standing for freedom. Free people read freely. I've brought some library swag bags and stickers, um, saying as such. So please help yourself. And with that, my board comments are finished. And.
Move to a journey.
Second.
It's me and journey.